He told me to just, he wants this table.
Yeah, you said today that you wanted to go ahead.
Oh, he wants the table.
Okay. When we discussed it today, yeah, we discussed it today. You said that there was indications that we wanted to go move ahead with that today.
I thought we were moving forward.
Hey.
We've been set for the recent.
When did you come to this?
They usually do the talking today.
But I talked to him. I put the door open. Seven pages in there. Where he's got to change.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
At one fifty P.
That's why I go pull over the house, pull over the house. He says, my wife's waiting up, love, I'm gonna go out. You get up, walk back.
Wow.
The house is crazy though.
It is.
Yeah, so, sorry. I should've said something upstairs. I just.
No, we're gonna.
I was talking into it then.
Yep. I got you. Yes. Red and something else.
All right. Sounds good to me. I understand at six o'clock, I can't afford a watch, I don't undoubtedly have one, so they have to tell me. Welcome, everyone, to the August sixth meeting of the Gastonia City Council. We're glad to have everyone here. I would like to, at this time, if I, if I may, have a short prayer, and after which we can stand and pledge allegiance to the flag behind us. I would like to, to mention, for us to keep in our thoughts and prayers, we lost, one of our staff members lost her dad yesterday, was Mauro Messer, who is always here at every meeting we have, and she lost, he was a young seventy-three. And so, I talked to her last night, and certainly we want to keep her in our thoughts and prayers. She's been a very, very good, longtime employee of the city of Gastonia. Let us pray, please. Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. We thank thee for letting us come together as a city and as a community. We ask that you bless every family member that's here tonight, and the members of all the families that are here tonight. We thank you for our veterans, and we thank you, and we help, we ask that you help the breed of the city. And help our city grow and prosper, in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to now, item C, have the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, next, well, the approval of the minutes, minutes of the regular council meeting of June the eighteenth. Is there a motion to approve?
Semi.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Please, raise your hand. Thank you. Uh, item E is, we have two awards that we would like to, to give tonight. Um, the, um, presentation is by the chairman of the, uh, uh, awards and ceremonies committee, Mr. Gallagher. Uh, he's brought his speaker along with him. Uh, it's usually the other way around. Uh, he can't talk, or he does do very well, so. So, so his wife's tickled to death. Uh, but, um, first of all, I would like, and, and I will, we, he and I together, we'll go down and, and make the presentation. The first is a certificate of, of recognition to Ms. Katie Dennis, Dennis? Gaston County's, hm? D-A-N-I, Dennis. Um, Gaston County's Regional Representative to the Scripps Communications Spelling Bee. And then after that, we have a proclamation for the Purple Heart City. Location, go right here, now. Katie? Come on. Me, and your family.
Here is a, from the city of Gastonia, a certificate of recognition awarded to Katie, Gaston County Regional Representative to the Scripps Communications Spelling Bee. This is the sixth day of August twenty thirteen, the mayor of the city of Gastonia, congratulations. You're, you're proud. You're, uh, proud.
Have her come back, Mr. Dennis.
Sort of, she took off fast. I always used to come back.
I just want to tell you how proud I am of the great, the top of the place, the life. Go win it next time, and you have a great voice, and, 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 and like the same, the one, Zach, when you spill, you like the same. Ask me. I'm so proud of you. Thank you so much.
Where do you go to school? Gaston County. Thank you.
In behalf of, uh, councilman, hm? Yeah, I, I'm gonna say, in behalf of Councilman Gallagher, we'd like to ask those, my friends, the Purple, come up, please, and. I'd like all of you, especially the beard. We've already had this conversation. Ladies and gentlemen, I, there is a lady. Gentlemen, this proclamation, I'd like to read, Gastonia. Whereas Purple Heart is the oldest declaration in, in present use, and was initially created, uh, as the badge of military merit by George Washington in seventeen eighty-two. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or declaration made available to the common soldier and awarded to any member of the United States Armed Forces wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, chartered by an act of Congress, is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran, veteran members and their families, promote patriot, patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure that we never die. Whereas there are numerous combat wounded veterans who live in the city of Gastonia. And whereas the city of Gastonia pledges to support those who serve their nation, uh, through which together we build strong communities. And whereas on the sixteenth day of April two thousand and thirteen, the Gastonia City Council voted unanimously to accept the invitation for Gastonia to become a Purple Heart City. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Gastonia hereby honors the Military Order of the Purple Heart and proudly supports the recognition of Gastonia as a Purple Heart City in the state of North Carolina, and witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and calls the official seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this, the sixth day of August in the year of our Lord, two thousand and thirteen, uh, John D. Bridgman, Mayor, tested by Virginia-Crate City Purple. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't know what else to do much better than that, but we appreciate you. We're glad to be part of this. And man, it, it didn't take us too long to discuss this, to discuss this, if you remember. But, uh, to be part of you. And we want you to take this and give me the other one that's framed, um, that is framed, and, uh, we're just glad to be part of you. And I would like for you to, to also, as Mr. Gallagher says, you can step around and just.
Thank you for the invitation. Thank you, we're quite proud to be a Purple Heart City. Absolutely, wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service to our country. Absolutely. Thank you so much, appreciate your service. So, appreciate it, Tom. Absolutely, thanks, I appreciate it. I will, for sure. Mike?
Very nice pen.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Look a little different to you.
Yeah.
Very nice pen.
I like that.
Thank you, thank you, and I'll wear it proudly. Thank you very much. So, we've been discussing this, okay? Is there a second? Discussion? All right, sir. All in favor? Thank you very much. That was, uh, that was very interesting and always wonderful to participate in there with the, both, both Katie and, and the Purple Heart. Um, thank you, Jim. The, uh, presentation next, item F, is Ms. Misty Moore, United Way of Gaston County, reference, request for in-kind services, Taste of Gaston, September twenty-first. Carmen, you are not Misty.
I am not Misty. She brought her speaker as well.
She brought hers, well, yeah, that's right, everybody has a speaker.
Um, I am Carmen Schultz with United Way here in Gaston County, and we are so proud to bring our sixth annual Taste of Gaston to downtown. I'm very excited about it again this year, on September twenty-first, a Saturday, from one to six downtown. Um, we are requesting street closures, um, again, the same setup as last year. Um, we're requesting to close Main from Marietta to York, and, um, from South, uh, close South Street from Main to Edmond Way. And we're also requesting police fire medic, sanitation, parks and rec, um, just like last year, and I just, I want to say thank you. We could not do, um, that event without you all. It's very exciting, it kicks off our fundraising campaign. Um, so, it's a wonderful event, not only for downtown Gastonia, but also for United Way to help us make some money, um, to kick off our campaign, to support the programs that we fund.
Okay. Any questions of Carmen?
Who, who's the headliner this year?
We are not gonna have a concert this year. Um, our presenting sponsor was not able to come back this year, so instead of taking it down a notch and not bringing a national act, we're gonna take a year off and come back with a bang, so. We follow the concert series, so hopefully folks will come out and enjoy all those concerts and, and we'll come back.
We're a pretty cheap group, if you'd like to.
Do y'all want to?
Talk to us.
Okay.
There's a.
They don't look like they want to.
Members of the council, uh, last year, there were a number of restaurants there, and that, and it really, uh, I think the round had just started, and you were able to taste some of the special foods that each of the Gastonia restaurants have. It's a great way for restaurants in Gastonia to really project themselves, too. So, it's really this Taste of Gaston, it's good for the, it's good for economic development for the restaurants.
Right, and with the ticket book that folks buy to get the taste, there's a coupon back to the restaurant, so it encourages folks to go back and, and give them some hatred.
Any other questions?
I'm ready. They will watch the song.
Yep. That's great, Tom.
Thank you.
And I do have a, a note from, uh, Larry Wood saying that, that we're A-OK, uh, in-house with, uh, being able to, to work, work with you and work out the details, also of what needs to be done. They're used to it by now.
Ma, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we, uh, approve this request for in-kind services for the Taste of Gaston.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll see y'all on September twenty-first.
Be, be hungry, that's right. Thank you. If, um, I'm gonna go to public expression, after, after which, before consent agenda, I will ask to recognize some more scouts, if I can see in the, in the audience. Uh, but, um, is Mr. Corey Haney here? From Gaffney, South Carolina? He had called in and asked to be put on the agenda, so here's his chance, so, you know. And that's not him. Okay, uh, the only other one is Mr. Jan Deans, and he's sitting right in front there.
My name is Jan Deans. I reside at sixty-nine oh-four Stony Ridge Road in Matthews. Appreciate the opportunity to speak for just a moment. As, uh, some of you may know, I am the executive director for Family Service, Inc., and, um, right over here in the United Way building, where Carmen and Misty reside. We actually rent from them, and they're great landlords, we appreciate everything they do for us. Uh, I would like to come today and just to invite the council and make an announcement about our fundraiser that we're having on September the seventh. There's only one problem, only two of you that are sitting up there are able to go, because it's a Little Black Dress Party, and it's just for ladies. Uh, but I wanted to bring it, I know that's really disappointing for Mayor Bridgman, but it is what it is, and I have to accept that. Um, but we would like to invite you guys, I brought some flowers I wanted to drop by. Our agency's, uh, services about seventeen thousand people a year. Uh, we handle everything from financial services to mental health counseling, to sexual assault, to child advocacy. Uh, so we do a variety of different services, we're a multi-service, social service agency, and we just, uh, would like to have the honor to have you guys there, and can be there. The information is on here, it's gonna be September the seventh, from six to ten, at the Gastonia Convention Center. Uh, they've worked well with us, we're gonna have a nationally, uh, published author who's written five books on the New York Times Bestseller List, and, uh, a concert, um, with the band Hotwire. And so, we're looking excited, this will be a, um, big step for us, in light of the recent changes that we've had to go through. And so, I, I also want to say publicly, uh, from my perspective, regarding Mauro Messer, um, Ed and Flip both have been instrumental in allowing her to help us try to find a new, uh, building, uh, which we have not done yet, but I greatly thank them and thank Mauro for all her hard work as well. So, I just wanted to make that.
Jane, let me ask you, the, the, if I may, I, maybe I, I missed something there, but you left us out at the Black Dress, but you said you were gonna be there. What, what do you, uh, how you figure that?
Well.
Did I miss something?
Well, there has to be, I'm gonna be there just to speak for a moment, is all.
Oh.
I'm, I'm out, I'm, I was told that I have to leave as soon as I get my two cents worth in, that's it. I'm not allowed to stay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
There, on here is the information, but they can call the, uh, uh, Family Service, Inc., at seven oh four eight six four seven seven zero four, and we will take them right to the, um, the webpage, we have a Facebook page called Little Black Dress Party, and they can go there and they can register and sign up there. We are trying, we have, we've calculated the best that, the minimum that we need is a minimum of eighty-five hundred square feet, eighty-five hundred to nine thousand square feet. We had an opportunity with the Jarman Building down the street, Mr. Jarman was very, very gracious, very helpful, but the timing, we just, uh, financially couldn't work out the details that, for a moment, so we're still looking.
Thank you very much, Jane.
Good luck with the event.
Before we, uh, start on the consent agenda, um, I would like to, at this time, if, those that would like to, uh, that are here in uniform, uh, excluding, I, I was referring to the scouts, of course, uh, to the, who comes to chief, uh, is to, uh, come forward and, uh, let us embarrass you just a tad, and, uh, wanna know your name, what, and what troop you're in, and where it is, and your rank, anything else you want to tell us? Okay, sir. You can just go over to the microphone, we can, old people, like, we can hear you, just your name and, and your troop, please.
My name is Wesley Bowman, from Troop Fifty-Eight, we're in Belmont, and I'm first class.
First class. Good, Wesley.
My name is Logan Teller, I'm in Troop Six, and I'm from Gastonia, North Carolina.
Thank you.
My name is Jackson Williamson, and I'm a PAC Six, and I live in Gastonia.
Well, it's good to have you. And a wolf. How old are you? A bear? Not a wolf, it's a bear.
My name's Nathaniel Bowman, I'm in Troop Eight, from Belmont, and I'm ranked a star.
Nathaniel, welcome. Yes, sir.
I'm Matthew Chambers, uh, I am first class, and I am from, I'm from Troop Six, and I'm from Gastonia.
Great, Matthew.
I'm Dylan Lawrence, and I'm from Troop Six, and I'm tenterfoot.
Tenterfoot. Yes, sir, right. You're going.
I'm Colin Decubac, from Gastonia, Troop Six, and I, Troop Six, and I'm first class.
First class.
I am Solomon Williamson, and I am in Troop Six, and I am a tenterfoot, from Gastonia.
Well, welcome, all of you. Yeah. Well, we certainly are glad to have all of you here, and I think it's great, fantastic. Consent agenda, um, and I think there were a couple to be pulled or to be, um, carried on to next meet, another meeting?
I believe we're good to approve all of these.
All these, all the consent, okay, is there a motion to approve the, on the consent agenda, one through seven? Is motion?
Second.
Second, all right, discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. Moving along. Under the regular, uh, agenda, item eight is the Metropolitan Planning Organization Memorandum of Understanding for Continuing Cooperative and Comprehensive Transportation Planning, the Gaston, Cleveland, Lincoln, um, MPO redesignation, Mr. Hank Graham, uh, principal transportation planner.
I don't see Hank here.
That's not Hank. No. Hey, Jack.
I can give my statement presentation.
Yeah. Good, yours.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Let's do that.
Good evening, Mayor Bridgman, members of city council. I'm Jack Kaiser, Senior Executive for Special Projects, and one of my duties is to supervise the, uh, MPO staff, and for your consideration, tonight is the Memorandum of Understanding, uh, that is organizational document for, uh, local governments within the area and NCBOT, which is a process we go through about every ten years, uh, when we have new census designations. Uh, as you probably know, the MPO is responsible for, uh, the three C are continuing cooperative and comprehensive transportation process for the metropolitan planning, uh, organizations, metropolitan planning area. As you all also know, that our transportation system is one that runs from through boundaries, from town to town, from city to city, um, throughout the county, throughout the, uh, region, regardless of, uh, political boundaries. Uh, and the state and federal government say that if you are going to get state and federal transportation planning money, whether it be for, uh, highways or public transportation, whatever, you must plan together and cooperatively, uh, between local governments. You probably know that Councilman Dave Perlin and Councilman Todd Kearsall are representatives, uh, for you on the, uh, Metropolitan Planning Organization. Uh, we call it the TAC, this new document calls it the Policy Board, and perhaps this may seem like deja vu all over again, because last winter, spring, you also approved the earlier version of the Memorandum of Understanding. That version, uh, was basically what was the, the minimal area within the census defined urbanized area, which in this case required us to go across into Cleveland County and take in Kings Mountain, a little area around Kings Mountain, and then take in High Shoals. Those are specific requirements, uh, following, uh, the federal standards for defining urbanized areas and MPO boundaries around them. After this went through the process of approval of, of the, uh, various local governments, it went down to NCBOT, and it has been sitting there since. Um, but right after it was approved, we were approached by Cleveland County and Lincoln County. Cleveland County said, we don't, we don't want to be split between, uh, the Gaston Urban Area MPO and the Rural Planning Organization, which, uh, covered, uh, Ardell, uh, Lincoln, Cleveland, and the northwestern part of, of, uh, Gaston County. And, uh, Lincoln County came to us and said, well, Mecklenburg's gonna have to come up, according to the census definition, come in and take in eastern Lincoln County, for all that's urbanized, urbanized along the, uh, western shore of Lake Norman, Highway sixteen, that whole corridor up through there. And, uh, they were well received generally by the Transportation Advisory Committee, and ultimately through, uh, a couple of meetings and some special meetings, uh, the Transportation Advisory Committee voted to, uh, take the option of, of, uh, actually including, uh, all, all of all three counties in the MPO. That's an optional thing that they could do, and it was actually encouraged by NCBOT. And this, in this case, it would do away with the Rural Planning Organization, that Ardell piece of it would go to MPO or Mecklenburg Union MPO, all of Gaston County, that part that's a charitable corner, area up there, would come into our MPO, all of Lincoln County would come in, they don't get to be split, Gaston County's not split, and all of Cleveland County would come into this MPO, so it would become a three-county MPO, to be called the Gaston, Cleveland, Lincoln, MPO. So, um, what you have is basically a boundary or a memorandum of understanding that incorporates all of those three counties into one MPO and does away with Rural Planning Organization. Well, do we get any more funding? The answer to this, in the state, was yes, we'll give you seventy-five thousand dollars of money that we were given to cover the other two counties, they don't require as much planning work as, say, the Gaston urbanized area, which is a much more urban area. Um, this version also, like the earlier version, includes a, uh, a sharing of the local match, uh, between all the local governments, instead of Gastonia picking up all the local match, our local match becomes a much, much less than, uh, what it, uh, what it used to be. And in fact, it is a smaller portion than what we had with the, um, the, just the original Gaston Urban Area MPO. So, the reasons that the TAC thought this was a good idea was that believed it would better coordinate, uh, uh, transportation planning over the three-county area. It would incorporate all of Gaston County, instead of that charitable piece not being within the MPO, and that it would provide a stronger, more unified vo, voice to NCBOT and the Board of Transportation, incorporating an overall three-county area, and there would be no splits. Gaston County wouldn't be split, a little bit up towards the terrible, Cleveland County wouldn't be split, uh, Kings Mountain coming in, and Lincoln County wouldn't be split. wouldn't be split with the eastern part of Lincoln County going into MUMPO. And you can imagine, with MUMPO having waited voting, Lincoln County felt that their voice in that would be not very strong. That was their feeling. So anyway, that's pretty much the gist of it, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. That's why this document is back to you again.
Mr. Gallagher, and Mr. Wood Temple, and Ms. Craig.
Jack, can this MOU be modified if we wanted to add something to it?
It could, to the extent that it would be allowed by the state and by the feds. And the thing of it is, all the local governments have to approve the exact same document. So we've already been through this process, and we are continuing. There's, I think, another meeting or two tonight that is being covered. I covered the meeting in Stanley last night. There was another meeting, I believe, in Lincoln County last night. So we would have to go back through again with those local governments that have already approved this particular document. And we've got, to be honest with you, we have got some very big mandated things to do. This is the year that we have to update our long-range transportation plan. And we have gotten sort of behind, behind, and behind the eight ball, because we've been waiting on a defined boundary in which to undertake that long-range transportation plan. So the longer we wait to finalize this out, the tougher it is going to be for the staff to try to meet the state and federal deadlines for that. Just adding that point.
I just have a simple recommendation, and I believe that we need to have representatives, elected officials on this board, not non-elected officials, or representative government here in the United States. And I feel that that's necessary if we're going to figure out how money needs to be spent, where it needs to be spent, and who needs to spend it. I don't want to, you know, limit it up to other people who aren't elected to make those decisions.
Yes, and just speaking on behalf of the overwhelming majority of the TAC, that matter was discussed with the TAC, and the majority voted to lead the language as it has been for 42 years, where the tradition has been that elected officials be the representatives. But there have been a few exceptions along the way where there have been some non-elected officials. In the particular instance of Bestin City, there was no one on that city council really interested in coming and participating, and there happened to be a previous elected official that had actually been chair of the TAC and was a very active participant, and come to that city council and volunteered to be it, and it was an option they chose. It's, and staff always encourages that it be an elected official. And I think the feeling with the TAC is we didn't necessarily want to tie the hands to leave that option for municipalities where they didn't have anybody wanting to. And we had some attrition due to this ethics thing that came up with General Assembly required filing. We lost some members over that, and we've had some reluctance on the part of some, to find someone with, on an elected body that was willing to do that. So from the staff standpoint, we need a quorum. We want people to come and participate and develop knowledge in transportation planning. And if it is, the MOU could say that it would be an elected official, with the exception of the Board of Transportation member who is not an elected official. None of the folks on the State Board of Transportation, which is really the big guys with the big decision-making authority just under the General Assembly, none of those, those are all appointed folks up there, and so are represented from Division 12 would have to be a non-elected official, because by nature, they're not.
I believe that Charlotte has it where they're elected officials.
They may have that.
And I feel that we need to do it the same way. You know, I understand that some cities don't want to put, you know, want to bone up to it. That's their problem. I mean, personal responsibility. If they feel they want to be partners, they need to ante up. I just feel that that should be part of this MOU.
And it was in the draft that went to the TAC last time, and they changed it to go back the way it always has.
Oh, it was there?
Yes, it was put in. There was a meeting up at the ACT Center, and Councilman Kearsall, they brought that up. We incorporated that into the draft that went to the TAC at the last meeting. The TAC voted to leave it as it had been before, rather than incorporate that requirement that it be elected. So that was actually in the staff draft that was brought to them to change it from the way it had been.
To be 100% correct, you put in the bylaws in the original draft, and legal said that it needed to go in the MOU versus the bylaws, and no one made a motion, or a motion did not pass to add that to the MOU as opposed to the bylaws.
So from the first onset, we can change that now, and then we go through to all the towns again?
I think it's important that an explanation be given if we do not approve this tonight or take some kind of action on it. And Jack or Eddie may be able to explain this more thorough than I can, but the, it's based on percentage of the population and the representation of that population that has to approve that. That's why it goes before each municipality city council, because we represent our population. And if I'm not mistaken, is it 75% of the represented population?
75% of the population of the urbanized area, which really are within our original MPO boundary.
Correct. Has to approve this. Gastonia represents, I don't know what percentage, but I think it's a little more than 25%.
42%.
42%. So without Gastonia's approval, this does not pass.
But we can prove it with contingent of putting this, having elected representatives being voting members?
Well, it's going to put us in an interesting situation. This has never been before, of course. You know, we've gone through the first round, and actually, all the jurisdictions approved that smaller version, and it's awaiting the state and federal government approval. So that's in place. Now, if we craft something that's different, and have our wording that's different, we will have two different versions, and we'll have to go back to the TAC, back to the, Lincoln called it not a TAC anymore.
Policy Board.
Policy, TPB.
Do it.
TPB, right?
Transportation Policy Board. Or just call it the MPO.
So it's going back, it would have to go back to that board, to our net out again, because again, you know, if you had a city like Gastonia that would say they didn't want to, would not approve it without it, then you would really be in a position where you really didn't have enough, because you would not have enough votes, you would not have enough percentage to approve this document. So we would then take it back to that group to see if we could hammer out a comment.
And we would probably have to go back to the units that have already approved this latest version, like last week and this week. We'd probably end up stopping that process, and the TAC meets again in September, and then we would have to go through that again, you know, sort of, with the exception of Gastonia now, we'd be back to square one. I don't think you're having a, have a problem with the Gaston County Board of Commissioners, because they had some questions about that. Probably, my guess, if I had to guess, the only jurisdiction that'd have an issue with that would be Bestin City, and if they voted against it, it really wouldn't affect whether it passed or not. They would just...
Again, procedurally, though, with this, if the MOU was approved, in order for there to be this change implemented at a later point in time, that would change, that would require a change in the bylaws, correct?
Well, I'd address this question to the city attorney, but I think the point is, if the bylaws govern how the TAC does its business, how it elects its chair, what's the quorum, that sort of thing, whereas the Memorandum of Understanding defines who's members of the TAC, and I think we talked in that, that really, who belongs, where you're saying who can be members, you're telling really the local governments who you can send and who you can't send as your delegate to the, to the, to the MPO. So that probably needs to be in the MOU. I would ask the city attorney to...
It's a material term that ought to be in the MOU. Bylaws are more for operating. Okay, so then, if this MOU was approved as it's written and proposed, then it would again, at some later point in time, require a revision of the MOU, which would take this process through the same, you know, arduous task that it's undergoing right now. So some of the concerns with this, you know, are the timing, you know, this, and the fact that you're saying if, if this was halted at this point, and then this process had to be repeated, once it's, you know, this change would occur, then the whole transportation and planning process for, you know, the long-range, you know, transportation plan that you're referring to, which is due as of the end of the year, or?
Hank, when is the LRT due? It's spring?
May.
May, okay. So, I mean, so this is some of the, these are some of the tactical difficulties with this particular process. Not to say it's not a good process, and of course, you know, we can slow the whole thing down, but we don't want to, you know, have the planners, you know, handcuffed extremely in terms of just taking another two months, you know, for instance, to get it to some point where we think it should be, or the whole thing gets shelved completely, because in principle, we don't think this is a good idea. So, and that's an important part of this discussion, too, is, you know, we think in concept, this is a good idea, and the question I posed, and Todd and I were on opposite sides of the vote when the TAC voted with this, and, you know, my biggest question, which was the question of the naysayers, was, you know, what does Gastonia gain by this, you know? Mr. Holder thinks that, you know, long-term, we gain because with a larger MPO, he thinks that we'll stand a better chance for better funding down the road with the state's new funding formula. And that may be a good point. My point was that I know that it's difficult to get 13 or 14 communities together to plan things, and the current Metropolitan Planning Organization, and now you've expanded this into three counties, so there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot more communities involved. I think there may be a dilutional effect to Gastonia in a larger organization, and that was my concern. So, but I think there's some, some basic, you know, question of philosophies and principles here, as to, is this the right time? It's true, you know, you can, you can question whether or not you want to call it a Metropolitan Planning Organization when it's all said and done, because this is way outside the bounds of the metropolitan organization. What would you consider to define as metropolitan?
Let me say that, if I may, that going back to earlier, Mr. Campbell? And then Ms. Craig?
I'm sure I want to start with Kate, and I want to throw this out, maybe ask you to answer this, my thought was that the target's sort of certainly not slowing down in the process, and we know and tell all the people who are trying to keep the plan on track, but also, we also think that hopefully we'd like to have the rest of the pictures on there. Would this pass to be passed with an agenda to that?
I mean, you can pass yours by revising the section in 8-4 for the voting members, except for the Board of Transportation appointee, to be elected officials. And then that is a different agreement than what everybody else has considered, and so staff's going to have to go back to those local governments and ask them to accept that change, and they're going to have to vote on the agreement again. So, you know, you can condition your approval on that.
As I understand, the response would be, Ben, you're really correct. You're voting on, you're voting potentially DA on every issue except that, and so singularly, you'd be bringing back, holding back issues that?
They would have to vote on, vote on it again to accept that change.
My question is, the whole plan or just that singular?
If they haven't voted on it yet, the agenda item could be prepared to say, "All you need to do is revise this section."
Ms. Craig? To, to just kind of clarify the role of members of the MPO, or whatever it's being called now, it's my understanding that a member votes on recommendations for funding transportation money that comes into the MPO. Is that right?
Yes, they, they vote on setting priorities to the local transportation improvement plan that goes on to the state transportation improvement plan, and a whole lot of other things in terms of, you name it, from air quality determination to just, there's a whole host of things, but yes, setting those priorities, absolutely.
All right, so a member, a voting member, has quite a bit of influence on the outcome that goes to the big board in Raleigh.
Yes, and even more so now. The federal government has required and mandated, and every time they, they deal with the new federal legislation in the state, more and more power is really going to the MPOs, and in the latest legislation at the state level, again, they're looking at MPOs to make these decisions as to how transportation dollars are spent.
And I wanted that clarification, so, because I thought that's the way it was, but now that has been clarified, and I think that is why it's so important that a voting member be an elected official, is because then, as a voting member, as an elected official, you can be held accountable, okay? Because you are in charge, or you're, you're, you're charged as a member of the MPO is to make those decisions. So that's, I mean, I just feel that having members on that board that are not elected officials, they don't have the same, maybe the same goals or the same thoughts as an elected official might have, because sometimes an elected official has more, more information, okay? So I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but I feel like that that's why it needs to be an elected official, and that, I would certainly support an elected official being a voting member other than, than the North Carolina Republican.
Mr. Mayor, what I want to ask Councilwoman Craig is that having been on the MPO, and Jack touched on the disclosure requirements that so many people found onerous, and they resigned because of that, I mean, that is affecting our elected officials who are willing to participate, and so Gastonia's going to be able to have an elected official be on, be on the board, but there may be a city who, who isn't. So if they come back to us and say, "None of us are willing to be on it because of those disclosure requirements, and we want to put somebody else that we found," what is, what is our response to that?
You don't get a vote.
I just, I think if they lose that, that opportunity, I mean, because it is there with restrictions. It's kind of like putting a conditional use permit. Okay, you can do this, but it has certain restrictions that you're going to have to abide by. And this MOU is basically a understanding of these are the guidelines. You know, I'd kind of like to suggest at this point that we table this, maybe until next month. I don't know if that's going to put y'all behind the eight ball.
Can we vote?
But what's another month or two compared to the longevity of this?
Well, if your, if your will is to have it as elected officials strictly, no exceptions, elected officials, except, as the city attorney mentioned, the Board of Transportation members, I would strongly recommend to you that you go ahead and prove it with that caveat in there, and then we will go on with the process to the remaining local governments, send the thing back to the ones that have already approved it, and simply say, "Are you, are you willing to live? We'd like for you to, this is what we would like to do." And, and we'll just sort of have to bring it to the TAC. Maybe we can call or poll or write or something, or even call a, I don't know, a special meeting, but we'd like to keep this approval process ongoing if we can, rather than to wait and be back into it in October.
I don't have a problem going ahead and approving the MOU with that language added. I think, though, it would be prudent to kind of take an informal call to see if, because as Councilman currently mentioned, he and I differed on whether to even vote to approve this new MPO, so I think it would be prudent to kind of take an informal call to make sure... sure a majority of the council approves of the new MPO. And if they do, then we can add this language, approve the MOU, send it back and say, okay, we're in if you add this language. If you don't, we're out and it's, it's all over anyway. But I, I think we need to know if, if everyone even supports the new, the new MPO.
The three-county MPO.
The three-county MPO. If everyone...
So, so, so your, your motion would be, I, I'd like to make a motion that the council endorse the three-county MPO.
Correct.
Okay. Just, I'm just trying to get, and all it will be is, will give us an indication of whether we're going to approve this MOU or not.
Right, I just, and, and I would like to make that motion so that we can get an informal poll and then move on to, are we gonna approve this MOU? Because the MOU is not only just approving the language that's in it, but it's approving the new tri-county MPO. So if, if, if I could go ahead and make that motion, we'll get a quick poll on that.
Well, I'll pull the walk, uh, and then, and then if you hold, let's see, hey.
Just real quickly, if it goes to what, exactly what you're saying, Councilman Campbell, um, Ash, where I seem to be at a loss is, um, in approving this with, and we can call it amendment caveat, what carries the legal, uh, the legal weight, in other words, for this to be approved and that to happen? You know, that language can be incorporated down the road if we go for through, and I think that's kind of like where you're going with this too, but if we're approving the rest of the concept with that, we call it a caveat amendment, how do we make it stick?
Well, it, it won't stick unless all of the other sixteen local governments also incorporate that language into their version of the MOU. And so you would make a motion to approve the MOU with additional language in, you know, the voting member section on exhibit eight dash four, that the members appointed by local governments be elected officials.
Okay, and, and, uh, just, I'll be the next question. What happens if we do and they do not, the rest of the board does not vote that way? Does that, does that come back to us then, or?
I, it, it, it may. It may come back to you to, to vote to accept it on the terms that they want, because the MOU's not gonna be created unless all seventeen, uh, the state and the federal government all vote to accept the same version.
Actually seventy-five percent of the population within the census-designated urbanized area, which then means it doesn't have to go to Cle- well, Cleveland County own, has a little bit of that, but for instance, Lincoln County wouldn't even be involved in meeting that threshold requirement. So Gastonia's forty-two percent of that, and, you know, you're, you're, and, and I would suspect that Gaston County's not gonna have a problem with that at all, because they did have questions about the non-elected officials being on there, a lot of questions that they, uh, uh, questioned Hank Graham, and went ahead and approved it, but I think going back to them, just guessing how they were standing last week on this, they're not gonna have a problem with that. Once you get Gastonia and Gaston County, you probably have the seventy-five percent, or you're real close, and you just got Bill Martin-Holly. If Bessemer votes against it, it's not, and they're the only ones that vote against it, it's not gonna matter, except the Bessemer's sitting.
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask Mr. Munt to tell us what the advantages to Gastonia are and the disadvantages of to Gastonia, what they are in this program.
The advantages in the older system, system we were in, the smaller one is, that just as Councilman Perlin indicated, there are fewer representatives, and we are, we are a very large, uh, population base compared to that MPO. And in that, in our existing boundary, it is, they're urban places, and our urban issues are common among us. Now, when you look at the three-county group, I've just been to one or two meetings with them, you're already seeing that there are rural issues, and there are issues that are really far-flung among the three counties. Uh, our representation is a bit diminished with it. The advantage is that the state very much wants us to consolidate. They are, they, they like the idea of not having to go to multiple meetings, I think that's one of the things there. Uh, and they also feel that if they, if they get more governments together, it's more efficient with their system. So you'd almost have to have a crystal ball to see which one of these really works better. I think initially, I felt, and the staff all felt, we really didn't want to go into a three-county jurisdiction because of feeling of getting our views on urban transportation problems diluted in Gastonia's rural community. Uh, but again, the state has strongly pushed it, Gaston County pushes it, uh, because they, they like the idea of bringing Charriville in, and also I think they just like the idea of a broader county group, and Lincoln and Cleveland County. So, uh, those are the, that, that's the balance.
Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate, and I'm gonna say, I'm talking to everybody, and it's nothing personal to any one person, but I made an agreement to myself a year and a half ago, there are people sitting here that probably would like to go home, and, uh, if we took this one project, one, and it's important, but if we did this on all of them, we'd be here Friday afternoon. And, uh, so I'm gonna stop it, and, uh, there are people, and I don't know exactly what some of them may be here for, except it might be some of the other things we have going. Now, do you want to make a motion? And you did try, uh, if, if we can get on with this, but I think that if you want to go back to it, uh, we can come back to it, but I think that it's sort of a discouraging in a way to just keep going on and on and on, and these, these folks may want to be here for another reason. I don't think they came here to hear about the MPO.
Yeah, well, if I, if I could, and Ash will probably have to help me on this, I would like to make the motion that we approve this MOU for the sta-, uh, for the establishment of the new tri-county MPO with the language added, I think you said eight dash four is where it would need to be added in the MOU?
Sure.
That the members, obviously, other than the one NCT member, be elected officials. If that's not approved by the TAC, then obviously Gastonia is not approving the MOU that they've issued, so it's all where they may from there, but we're not in unless this language is changed, basically.
That does not apply to the non-voting members that are correct.
That's mine. Have a seat. Discussion on the motion. Yeah, um, I don't like the three-county thing, so I'm gonna vote no on, so I respect you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Yeah? Get that good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jack. Now, what we're gonna do in the situation here is, Ed, if it's okay, is, is, we're gonna probably, I, I'm just looking at, I, I would probably, it won't take too long, I, I'd like maybe to, to skip over to item eleven, uh, the banking, and then after it, there's transportation, there's utilities, there's central city revitalization, um, of course up there, the generator muffler system, Paul, um, Ed, give me some direction, what do you, what, what's, what do we need to do next, time-wise?
We can, we can do the banking.
Let's do item eleven, award of contract for the city of Gastonia Banking Services for the period of October one, twenty thirteen through December thirty-one, twenty sixteen, Bank of America, Susan Plus Revenue Administration.
Mayor, members of council, um, the city's been banking with RBC, PNC Banks since two thousand and five. Um, we renewed that contract several years ago, and it expires at the end of August. So, um, we actually went to PNC back in the spring and tried to, you know, negotiate to keep the same rate of seventeen twenty-five a month, which is really a bargain, um, but unfortunately, we weren't able to do that. So the first of June, we sent out ten, we sent out RFPs to ten area banks, we got back five responses and one response from one of the local banks that said they couldn't provide a proposal. Um, the proposals included all of our banking services, roughly fifteen bank accounts, automated bank drafts, um, lots of wire transfer capabilities, that kind of thing. The responsive banks gave us both itemized charges for banking services and also an earnings credit allowance. As far as the responses that we got, there were two banks that came in low from the standpoint that would save us money over what we were paying now. One of those was Park Sterling, and the other one was Bank of America. Unfortunately, Park Sterling, um, wasn't able to provide some of the services that we need, especially from an account reconciliation standpoint. Um, we use Positive Pay, which is sort of a broad protect, and our accounts payable, and they don't offer that service right now. So the lowest responsible bidder was Bank of America. Um, their contract will save us about fifty-three hundred dollars a year over what we're paying now, um, roughly sixteen thousand dollars over the three-year contract period, plus they're gonna maintain a floor on the earnings credit of point four oh percent over the three-year period. And it could obviously go up as interest rates improve, um, and they are gonna waive the service charges altogether for the first three months during the time that we transition from PNC to Bank of America.
Questions, Mr. Grant?
No question, Your Honor. I'd just like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation, it's gonna save us five thousand dollars changing banks. I think that's excellent, and she did a great job.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Will all of our financial monies go through Bank of America?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, we have, we have fifteen accounts, um, some large, some small. Um, all of our money does eventually filter through there, but we have relationships, um, like PB and T actually does our retail lockbox, our processing of utility payments. We have three fairly significant accounts with them on bond funds. Um, every time we have a bond issuance, um, we look as far as placing those funds, so not all the city's money is tied up in Bank of America, or, you know, will not be, but that's the major activity. Everything's gonna basically flow through there, because we have to have a, an official depository under the North Carolina state statute, and so that would be our official depository.
Well, the reason I was asking that question, and that's a great answer, thank you, I appreciate that, and I'm glad we don't have all our eggs in one basket, okay? Uh, but, you know, Park Sterling is more of a local bank...
Correct.
...than some of the other bigger banks. I would just encourage staff to look and see if there's anything that we would be able to, uh, do with Park, Park Sterling, so that we can begin to start developing a, a relationship with a more of a local bank than big, big ol' ones.
I agree, I agree. And Daryl Marr, um, who was the gentleman who worked with Gordon Quarles on the RFP response, um, he was just very diligent, did a great job. As far as the RFPs and the presentations, um, Bank of America and Park Sterling's were right up there as far as we had the fewest questions with them, looked nice, you know, but, um, when it comes down to it, there were just certain services they couldn't provide, but, um, I know that Park Sterling and all these other local banks are on the list when we have bond issues or other things that come up, merchant services, um, we send those RFPs to other banks, um, so, yeah, we definitely do that.
Well, I just, I, as a advocate for local vendors...
I agree.
...I, I, I wanted to just say that for the record. I think if we can do something like that, then that, that just enhances the dollar spend.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Motion of the second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Janamus, thank you, Susan. Um, what you want to knock out, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a representative from Central Island Council of Governments that's here for item nine, is in attendance. This has to do with that contract...
The item nine?
Mm-hmm.
Services agreement between the city of Gastonia and the Central Island Council of Governments, uh, fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, not to exceed eighty-one thousand, uh, eight hundred and forty-one dollars budget amendment fiscal year eight, well, same thing again. Mr. Graham?
This is the missing...
This missing.
We have all points.
Sorry, I'm like, um, the item that you have before you is a contract that corresponds to the MOU that you discussed earlier on the agenda. Um, as we went through the discussions to expand our boundaries to include all of Lincoln and all of Cleveland County, we in fact, through, through that effort or action, took in an entire RPO boundary, or the remaining, um, amount of that RPO boundary, which was previously all of Ardell County, all of Lincoln, and all of Cleveland. Uh, Ardell County became an urbanized portion or section of Mecklenburg Union MPO, so we took in all of the remaining portion or section of the Lake Norman RPO. Having done that, we took all of the money that the state, uh, Department of Transportation had allocated for the staffing of that RPO, and we are receiving those funds. It's, it totals seventy-five thousand dollars, and, um, we, as the MPO, LPA, city of Gastonia, will actually have that seventy-five thousand. Um, as part of that, this agreement for staffing and contractual services to assist the existing MPO staff in providing transportation planning, uh, activities and efforts for the two new counties that we are bringing in, um, that's the contract that you have with.
Questions, Mr. Grant?
Yes. The, the original contract with the Lake Norman RPO was with the Central Island Council of Governments?
That is correct.
They, they were the lead planning agency for the RPO, is that correct? And that's why this is written in this way?
And that staff person is still staffed with him, he's, he's been performing those duties for two years, and that is, that is another reason why he is with the Central Island Council.
Mr. Mayor, he's here, I'd like him to welcome introduce himself. Uh, he is the planner with the RPO. He could just, just give us a, a short piece of what you do.
Sure. Um, my name is Bjorn Hansen, I'm transportation planner for Central Island. Do several activities with the Cog, but one of them is staffing the Lake Norman RPO, which I've done since two thousand and five, and we have been under contract with the state DOT to do that since two thousand and two, and this whole consolidation occurred because Cleveland County really initiated this process. They wanted to not be split with their representation, and so they, along with Lincoln County and remainder of Gaston County, really initiated this. We assisted them in their direction, and so this consolidation occurred, and to assist with this first year of transition into a much larger organization, um, the MPO staff recommended that they contract with Central Island for the amount of money that the state DOT is gonna transfer to the MPO in exchange for consolidating. This is the first time this has happened in North Carolina, so we're really establishing a precedence for how this is done, but the amount of, the amount of the contract is actually less than the amount that the MPO will be getting, so there's no additional cost to the MPO to, to contract the Central Island Service.
Bjorn has been working with the city of Shelby and with Lincoln, and those for the last couple of years, and that'll help us with the transportation. Yes, um, Ms. Craig, then, then, Mr. Fisher?
The eighty-one thousand, eighty-one eight forty-one, that's the full cost for, uh, for the services?
That's, that's correct, ma'am.
Okay, and that money is coming from where?
That money would come from, that's actually seventy-five thousand comes from the state, which then has to be matched with a twenty percent local match, so it ends up being about eighty-one thousand, or ninety-one thousand approximately, and so that money comes into the, uh, the city, eighty percent from the state and a twenty percent local match proportionally, distributed amongst the three counties and municipalities, and then we would, um, I forget if it's either monthly or quarterly, uh, work with Hank on the tasks that he wants us to do, we put together the cost for what it will be to provide those, those tasks, we complete them, we invoice, and that's how it works over the course of the year.
So the, if, if we go to a three-county, uh, situation, then the other counties have, do you, will you have a contract with the other counties?
No, ma'am, it would be with you on behalf of all of them.
Okay, all right, but they're contributing to that eighty-one eight forty-one...
They would pay the, the roughly sixteen thousand in local match...
Okay.
...and so that would be invoiced by Gastonia, it would go into your account, and then It would go into your account and then you would pay out the invoice and pay some money.
So, Gastonia is not liable for the whole eighty-one thousand even though it's reimbursed? Okay.
Yours, yours, your responsibility for only a, a fraction of your local match. Thousand dollars.
That works.
Can you do the planning for Lincoln County right now?
Correct. Um, well, we did do the planning for Lincoln County.
Did do the planning for Lincoln County.
Yes, sir.
So, where I'm at a loss is Lincoln County's been a part of the new MPO. You're talking about doing this for a year under a contractual basis. Why not just bring you over into the new MPO? Why are you staying with Central?
Well, I'm an, I'm an employee of Central Island. There was no additional position that was created within the City of Gastonia, and frankly, there was not enough work to justify one additional position. And so, we're just contracting on it on this first year so that frankly, the MPO can figure out how much additional staff they need and what kind of skills they need. After this year, you guys may decide, cancel the contract. You're gonna create a new position that's housed by the City of Gastonia and you'll terminate the contract with us and hire someone. But, this is the first year where you have that transition, where you have a lot of our in-house experience and familiarity of working with them and also just providing you a lot of on-call services during this transition period, especially with your long-range transportation plan, uh, TIP development, mapping, transplanted, things like that. And then, after, after June thirtieth of the next year, you may tell us to go away.
Any other question? Yes, sir.
Sir, um, I'm reading item eight. It lists down, um, the three people that could be working in conjunction with us, principal, principal trans, transportation planner, the senior planner, GIS, and the senior planner. Uh, those are the three people that we coordinate with and work with. And they say that they have one thousand two hundred and fifty hours. It comes out to hundred and fifty-six days. You guys work hundred and fifty-six days with us?
We work on, we'll, we'll work on the tasks on a per hourly basis. Though, I forget what the, the rate was, but, you know, if it's twelve hundred and fifty hours divided by that eighty-one thousand dollars, that's the, that's the average rate of the different staff you have access to. Because it's not just me. It's also a landscape architect we have on staff, a GIS mapper, um, a demographer. So, we have, it's not just me, I'm, I'm the majority, but you have access to all of the resources within our agency. And it's, it's on-call. And so, only for those activities that you need our help is when we would actually be working.
Now, the eighty-one thousand, it's, um, we have to pay out. Uh, we're also receiving seventy-five thousand from that other, uh, other RPO?
You are. In, in addition, in addition, you'll also receive local match. You'll have to generate the local match for that seventy-five thousand. So, you'll actually be generating total a little over ninety thousand.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I, I strongly recommend we, we approve this because one of the reasons, uh, we like to have Bjorn work with us is his knowledge of those two counties. In the one meeting I was in, there was already distance between us. We've been working together as an MPO ourselves. They've been working out there as an RPO. We need to begin to build bridges as an organization. And one of the ways to do it is by working with the staffing that they have, with the trust and the relationship, they, they integrate that into what we're doing. For this next year to have that transition is really important for us to do. And, um, Bjorn is a very good transportation planner and they do very good work often in this area. We really need their help for this next year.
Is a motion to approve?
Some of.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and apologize for being late.
That's all right. Um, do you want, Ed, you wanna do the, the generated muffin neck or just skip it or come back to it?
That, can we just vote on that? I mean...
It's, I'm saying, Paul, say, man, he'd like to force pull on it.
Mr. Jacu, Mr. Jacu's there?
Yeah, both of them. Two of them.
I'm, I'm wondering if that should have been in consent agenda?
You know, it could be. Uh, this is a very large item. It is federally mandated. It's, it's air quality.
Item ten.
And we...
Yeah, it's federally mandated, so we've just gotten to have it, so.
Let's go, Paul.
Good, how are you?
Okay, any, any questions? I mean, I'm, we've already, early.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, sir.
Paul, very good.
The shortest item on the agenda.
Thank you, Paul.
He's got one for you, Paul.
I got one, one question, Paul.
Not that easy.
Make his day.
Two questions. One, is the money coming from the electric and water fund balance?
It's coming from the capital projects. This, this has actually been mandated for quite some time. Uh, originally, it was supposed to set as a deadline for two thousand and twelve. However, the EPA postponed it for another year while they investigated it further. Uh, we finally got the mandate that it is due by May of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, we're actually gonna get started probably October, November timeframe after the, the peak generation season.
But, it's not coming from the general fund? It's coming from...
No, this is all coming from water and electric funds.
Second question. Uh, when will work start and when, when is the completion date forecasted?
Uh, forecasted, it has to be done by May of, uh, two thousand and fourteen. And we're gonna start after peak season, which is, I believe it's October, so probably November timeframe. We'll start one at a time going through the, the six units that need to be done.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
Ed, we wanna go to you, Transportation next, Utilities?
Yes, sir.
Transportation Committee report, Councilman Walter Kimball, Chairman of Item Twelve.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we're actually gonna move, um, Ed, I know that, that there's been, actually, it's late at one PM, I think today, there was a request to postpone the one item, um, doing with a community project. And then, there's gonna be a couple items, uh, dealing with specifically Cox Road, the intersection blocking, channelization, uh, paint, and also the, uh, hopefully, a project down the road by DOT which will add another lane from I, another exit lane from I eighty-five northbound to Cox Road, um, past the mall to Franklin. So, I think with those three aside, Ed, am I correct, we'll move forward with the rest?
Yes, sir. Uh, and, and those items, uh, in the exhibit would be items, uh, one, three, and, and seven, we're going to take back and do some of the work. So, then, uh, that would bring us to item two, the sidewalk program, proposed priority rating system, project ranking system, pedestrian plan, uh, update.
Mayor, Members of Council, uh, I'll go through these quickly and we go into as much detail as you would like. Uh, but item two was provide to the Committee for information only. Uh, basically, all of the sidewalk projects that were approved for the big bond referendum approved by the voters have been or will soon be completed. We will recognize some savings in those projects. And also, as we bid the four major road widening projects, we hope to realize savings in those as well. So, as part of that, we have maintained for years a sidewalk needs list. And as we have money available, we tend, we, we go through that list to try to do the highest priority first. Um, what we've done at staff level is tried to come up with a more comprehensive prioritization policy and program. And as that evolves, we will go back through committee and as money is available, hopefully through savings on some of these bond projects, we can come to council and recommend, uh, sidewalk projects and move forward with those. So, that was presented for information purposes to the Committee and be happy to answer any questions on it.
Questions? Somebody? All right, sir. Item four?
Uh, item four, uh, I think we talked about that at a previous meeting and Mr. Munn is very familiar with that one.
Yep. This, this was that project that came out of nowhere essentially, as we ended up reading it in the Gastonia Gazette. And so, we all rushed over there that, that day, that next day to see that this unveiling of the potential of a high-speed train from Atlanta to Charlotte. And the exciting thing about this proposal is driven by the Department of Transportation for Georgia. South Carolina and North Carolina are also partners, but there are six different alternatives. Three of the six call for a stop in Gastonia. Uh, one runs along I eighty-five and is stopped in Gastonia. The other runs along the Norfolk Southern, stop in Gastonia, potentially right here at our, at our potential multitudinal site. And then, the third one is a greenfield site deciding to come, the way they had it drawn almost down around the Bard Department, and that there would be again a Gastonia station. So, what we are recommending is committee voted unanimously, three zero, to endorse a resolution in support of the Atlanta to Charlotte passenger rail corridor route passing through Gastonia. The other three go through Rock Hill. So, it's relatively easy choice for us to say we would like that because we would then get high-speed rail from here to Charlotte, which we did not recommend we would look at other corridors before. It's almost like a second bite of the apple. When this happens, whether this gets funded is completely up to the further.
Would this help the, um, intermodal facility at all?
If, if they, if they select the Norfolk Southern?
Right.
Absolutely. Because then you get your high-speed rail to Charlotte. Uh, but, they may not, you know, they may go for the greenfield site, so, you know, we, we, we root. So, we'll just have to see how that goes. But absolutely, if they pick up. Yes?
Uh, Councilman Craig, just some further research on that. Really, if, if that was, as I alluded to, if that was chosen as the site, really, the, uh, the potential could be, that could be the highest user of that, you know, that intermodal, uh, it could actually be the, the biggest recipient of that area. But, Ed, there's nothing new in that, Ed. I know that we haven't, I haven't seen anything recent, real recent in the meetings.
No. Uh, we, we, we should be getting some information shortly. They were talking about by November making, uh, some preliminary decisions. So, we'll, we'll see. We have also worked with, uh, Congress Senator, Senator Burr, and trying to make sure that we have advocacy for as much North Carolina as possible.
And, and also, with Senator Burr, also hopefully get some more advanced notice of when it's going to be needing or hearing or something that he can weigh in on to a degree other than the...
Do we need to vote to endorse this or is this...
Said the council can endorse it as well.
Motion to endorse.
Is that made?
Second.
Discussion? In favor? Yeah? Item, uh, five, uh...
Item five was discussion of our automated signal control system. There were just some questions asked at committee. Uh, staff is continuing to look at the synchronization of that, and that's just more an ongoing type endeavor and be happy to answer any questions on it.
Questions? The item six, question?
Item six, uh, staff had looked at all of our no turn-on red intersections, trying to look for opportunities to, uh, delete the no turn-on red and, uh, make it more convenient for motors. Uh, out of those twenty-three intersections, we identified six that we felt, uh, um, the no right-on-red could be removed. They were all on state intersections, uh, and would require DOT approval. We have sent that list, uh, to the state. They have responded in this past week and identified, they agreed with two of those six should be removed. So, we'll come back to the council, uh, with a resolution to take that out of our ordinance from an enforcement standpoint. Uh, and we'll continue to look at other intersections and, and maybe study them in more detail and work with DOT and see if we can, uh, lean towards removing, uh, more of those again to, to move traffic around. So, the committee voted three oh to, uh, pursue the removal of those, uh, no right-on-red where DOT, uh, would agree as well.
Okay. So moved.
Sir?
Sebastian? All in favor? Item eight?
Uh, item eight, eight, we, uh, gave, uh, just the details and that's in your agenda as well. We try to give regular updates on all of our transportation projects, specifically those again that were part of the voter approval GO bonds, uh, that, uh, as well as in your agenda on behalf of answering questions. Presented for information purposes.
Any, um, updates, any progress on getting that road to go through, uh, between your Chuck E. Cheese's at, Ruby Tuesdays to, uh, Home Depot and Toys R Us?
Somewhat, yes, sir. Uh, everybody supports it. It all comes down to who would fund it. Uh, so, at this point in time, we do not have a funding source and we certainly don't recommend that be a, a one-hundred percent city, uh, project at this point in time. But, we continue to look for opportunities, but it's always who will pay for it.
The stores chipping anything?
Uh, they have expressed an interest but have not come to the table with real dollars at this point.
You know the cost on it?
Uh, yes, I don't know it off the top of my head. I can get you that information. And unfortunately, we're dealing with a lot of corporate-type entities, uh, more than just local businesses. So, that's the difficulty in getting funding sources.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Members of Council, with, pertaining to street bump program, uh, our planning commission, a member, Lord Warren, asked a very good question. He wanted to know, he was worried about, uh, travel when you get to Titon, what kind of detouring it would want to be. And talking to our city engineer, all of our projects, the first one's middle school, but all of our projects, the intention is to keep the road open. So, there's gonna be like a short-term stop during construction, vehicles move back and forth. But, the idea and the theory is never to really close those for any extended period of time. And so, that's what the engineering's working with now in terms of the premise of how much to pull. Uh, some of these, it's difficult to get a easy detour because they're critical.
Sure.
So, uh, we, that, when we, for each of the projects, the first one's middle school, there, that whole business of construction and still keeping school traffic, neighborhood traffic, all of that going on as well as emergency. That's gonna be part of the complication.
That is actually part of the design, the traffic control. And what will be bid is for the contractor to maintain traffic during construction. Yes, you may have some stop and go, as Mr. Munn says, but, uh, in general, it will remain open at all.
Item nine?
Uh, item nine was the MPO. We've talked about that already. Uh, item ten is actually a, a, a great partnership project. We have been working with, uh, Choice USA, Sun Drop, on some, uh, roadway improvements right around the Franklin Chestnut area, some pedestrian enhancements, some beautification-type projects. Uh, we see a great opportunity there to partner with them, uh, to improve the streetscape of Gastonia. But, those details are in your agenda and that was presented for information as well. Uh, item eleven, uh, again, information purposes. Uh, we have been working with Piedmont Charter School on some of the traffic issues out there at the school. Uh, and again, related to the signal phasing, uh, our staff has worked with them. It's primarily, uh, some things they can do on-site to help improve, uh, during their high-volume, uh, times. Um, item twelve, uh, is a proposed, uh, we received a letter from, uh, State DOT Norfolk Southern. Uh, they again have identified the, uh, sig, the crossing at May Street, uh, for signalization. Um, uh, that's from a pure safety standpoint. Um, that project, uh, went to committee. We discussed it in detail. It's basically a ninety-ten split, uh, the local share, uh, the whole project is three hundred and two thousand, local share is ten percent or thirty thousand two hundred. Um, that is, uh, went before the committee for recommendation consideration. Committee voted three oh, uh, to recommend moving forward with that project to signalize that railroad crossing. Now, it would be something we have to budget, uh, in the upcoming fiscal year if council wants to pursue that. Um, but that was from committee or a three oh recommendation.
Motion to approve?
I would just like to say one thing.
Uh, thank y'all because that is a, a, uh, place that really needs some cit, uh, civilization. We got a four-way stop sign there and everything else, but people come across that, uh, railroad track. So, thank y'all. That's a, that's a great improvement for that area.
And just for information, I think committee also directed us to see if there's other opportunities for other maybe minor closings on some of the lesser-used railroad lines that might, uh, further minimize the city's local share. So, we'll continue to pursue that. Uh, item thirteen was other related matters, uh, pedestrian plan work... Item thirteen was other related matters, pedestrian plan workshop, some questions on the GO bonds and the eighty-five X route. And those are in your agenda and we'll be happy to answer any questions on it. And that concludes the transportation committee report.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
One question, Flip.
Try it, go ahead. He does pretty well not to be able to talk.
Eighty-five X, I'm not looking for like an additional bus route. I'm looking for them to take one bus away. They send four out in the morning. Just take one away and make it a noonday bus. They still have, you know, eight buses running. It's not, that's all I'm asking.
Correct. And I do not have a status report tonight, but I will get you a status. You had requested that of staff at that committee.
Because the wording there was...
Just real quickly, Flip, item thirteen subsection number one, could, you showed me the, the plan before the meeting tonight. I think it's very proactive what QuickTrip partnering with the city has done to improve the sidewalks there. Can you just very briefly go over that?
This is kind of a, just a, one small area of what the pedestrian master plan is. One of the issues or one of the concerns with QuickTrip at their location of Long and Broad is the accessibility of the local residents to get there via some sidewalks. So QuickTrip has installed sidewalks basically around the perimeter, the proper perimeter of their property. A few of them are still in, but they put sidewalks all around. When you look at that compared to the sidewalks in the existing neighborhood and on Long and Broad, very good accessibility for pedestrians to get there, for that neighborhood to get there. We do have a missing link on the south side of Long Avenue between Broad and Dollar General. That would be a good addition, but we'll continue to look for maybe some grant opportunities or maybe some corporate partnerships to share in putting that little sidewalk piece in. But a good example of how looking at a master pedestrian plan can work and serve our citizens.
Flip, one more thing. When you're driving up Cox Road heading, I guess, north to the I-85 bridge and you want to go I-85 south, there's got to be some turning signage there. And I know because my wife constantly is in that lane and trying to dive over and trying to kill me. So please help me. The other thing is when you come off of eighty-five at New Hope Road, that's a twenty, there's two lanes that turn there going left onto New Hope Road. State, when they fixed the road there, they didn't put the dotted lines in that show people where they're going to be going. So they're constantly going into the one lane to cut you off.
Skip lines.
Yeah. Show you what lane to go.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you very much. Item thirteen, utilities committee report presentation, Paul Bedeere.
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Mr. Munn to call and staff, a lot of this information is very technical.
Yes, sir. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bedeere to stand back up again.
I'll lose my voice here shortly.
And so now we're, we're at exhibit thirteen dash one and there was a lot of activity here and the, Flip, you want to get started with this? First is the discussion of the stormwater program policies and procedures.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, utilities committee met on July tenth. First item up for discussion was stormwater. We had an in-depth discussion mainly first is, is on the program and policy. Before we got to many fee discussions, we had a detailed conversation on what are, should we make any changes to the policy? What is the program? And then we got into the fee and made the fee apply to the recommended program of the committee. So I'm going to kind of go through these as shown in your exhibit on thirteen dash one. The first is the committee discussed requirement that property owners participate financially in any off right-of-way project and what that percentage would be. Again, the theory was if they have some skin in the game that is not just a city cost for doing that, the committee voted to recommend that affected property owners participate in ten percent of the project and that was passed by a three oh recommendation.
So we need to vote on that, council?
That, that is before council tonight. Yes, sir.
So I would move that we approve that, what committee recommended.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Go right ahead.
The second part of the program was actually an effort to try to expedite the property owner's request for projects. And that basically, it not only saves staff time, we think it gets done quicker, but basically a revision to the program whereby the property owner would first get preapproval of the project. They would, if they needed to hire an engineer to design it, and then they would bid it out themselves. And basically upon completion and approval by the city, we would reimburse them that ninety percent. We again think that saves time for the property owner. We think it saves the city money in that they can probably get it done with local contractors and not have to go through the statutory bidding requirements that we sometimes have to do. So the committee three oh recommended this reimbursement-based program, again, that would require upfront approval by the city for a particular project. And again, obviously dependent upon available funding, which would be part of that preapproval.
So move, please adopt that.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, C.
Item C was basically the limits of the city's financial participation and that has, I guess, informally been in place over the years, but we just wanted to reiterate with the committee and council in general, how much we should spend for these off right-of-way projects. Some of them can get into several hundred thousand dollars and cost benefit, at least from a staff perspective, was questioned as that. So the different priorities, as shown is your agenda, depend on the level of threat that stormwater may do to a property. And those are shown as priorities one, two, and three in your agenda. The committee recommends approval of those spending limits, but also recommended that they be used as general guidelines. That staff have some leeway in that, but certainly not double and triple those amounts in there. Committee voted three oh to recommend approval and just from a staff perspective, there will be projects off right-of-way that we can't do because they well exceed those thresholds. Be happy to answer any questions.
I move that we adopt a recommendation.
Second. Sebastian? All in favor? Go right ahead.
Item D, actually, once the program was defined and updated by the committee, they got into a discussion on possible fee increases. The base stormwater fee currently is two dollars and seventy-five cents per what's called per ERU. Basically, every household in Gastonia pays that. If you are a commercial-type entity, you pay that based on a multiplier depending on the amount of impervious area you have. I think at some of our council budget work sessions, we provided project list, how they're backlog. Some people have been waiting in excess of five years. This was a consideration to help move those forward and the additional funds generated by potential fee increase would be used for projects, primarily targeted towards off right-of-way. We do have the public right-of-way to maintain as well. We have a, a small covert failure down on Third Street now that was unanticipated that we'll have to move to the top of the list and fund. But in general, the fee increase, at least at committee level and through the council's budget discussions, I think we, we got the direction that that would be used for projects. So committee voted three oh to increase that fee effective January first, twenty fourteen, to three dollars and twenty-five cents per ERU for non-residential and again, three dollars and twenty-five cents per month for residential customers.
And what I think we kind of recommended, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we, that the law requires you to have a public hearing. We should have that public hearing before we establish any amount. So we'll have a public hearing first and then we'll decide how much we want to increase, not increase, whatever. So what we need to do is vote on having a public hearing at some time in the not-too-distant future and you can determine when you would like to have it. After the public hearing is over, then we can determine what, from the results of the public hearing, what we would like to do.
The, would?
Yes.
Do we need to have a date?
Yes, we'll...
Or can we just say we're going to have a program?
You don't have to specify the date now, but if you want to, you could.
We don't have to.
We just got to get it done by January first.
All in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
With the...
Right.
All right.
Item two, I thought we were well down the list, it's just item two that had several subparts to it. Item two is proposed advisory board for Two Rivers Utilities. As you know, that's a department of the city. But as, as part of our agreement with Cramerton, as we look toward regionalism, and in our contract with them, we agreed to form an advisory board. It's, it consists of, will consist of voting members, those entities who are fully consolidated with Gastonia. Right now, it's just Cramerton. And non-voting members, which would be all the other municipalities we serve in both Gaston County and Clover and York and South Carolina. So we have worked closely with Cramerton in, in developing those bylaws or advisory board. It's primarily the city manager or his or her appointee. That is in your agenda and the committee recommends three oh, that those be approved.
I so move.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Item three?
Item three, we gave the committee an update on the water treatment plan. As you know, that's probably one of our largest, most important projects coming up that will come before this committee to be built and funded. We just gave them an update and again, that update is in your agenda. Item four is electric substation. And actually, if Paul is still here, I'm going to ask him to quickly present that if he would. He is much more familiar with that than I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is to start the engineering process for a new substation that we are looking at needing because of the growth in the tech park. What we're seeing is a lot of growth up in the northwest quadrant because of the tech park and we're having limited reliability, we're having, we're not having reliability issues, but we're having limited supply of potential large customers. We're not proposing a site at this time. It's just the engineering for that. When we get time to do the actual bidding and purchasing and building of the substation, we're looking at, it's a twelve-to-eighteen-month process. So in order to be ahead of that eight ball, which we've been talking about all, all night, we want to go ahead and get the design and engineering work done. The potential with this substation is the site we're looking at is potentially in the tech park. And with that, we may also have the opportunity to expand out into Pace or Mount if something comes out of it that we do require power out there that is within the limits of what the substation would be. So all we're really looking for right now is just the approval to go ahead and get the engineering work done.
I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Mr. President, all in favor?
Thank you.
One question, Paul. How soon would this be up and running?
The substation itself would be twelve to eighteen months, once we got the design and bid process out there. The biggest thing is the substation transformer, which will probably be around the five hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar range. And those are normally anywhere from twelve to fourteen months lead time.
Project four, four moved. Please. Item five.
Item five is a proposed Stanley sewer interconnection project, another great regionalism project. Stanley had approached the city of Gastonia on the possibility of us receiving their sanitary sewer. It started out as just that on the western side. Right now, the eastern side goes to the city of Mount Holly. Stanley had asked us for a proposal to send all of their flows to Gastonia. We have worked to prepare an agreement, basic interlocal utility agreement to provide that. That has been before Stanley's board and has been approved. Stanley basically takes the largest financial burden of the project through some grants through the state. We participate financially in reimbursements to them, but those reimbursements are based on monies we receive for treating their sewer and the benefit cost has a very quick payback for us. So a good mutual opportunity financially beneficial to both parties. As part of that, we actually did a preliminary study several months ago that just to, to clear up the proper procedures to go through, we have to approve that agreement that's already been done and actually recommends that Stanley tie onto Gastonia's system. So a lot of details in that agreement, but I'll happy to be answering questions. Those are in your agenda, but we can talk in as much detail as you would like.
I so move that we accept the recommendation.
Second. Sebastian? It has been going on since, um...
Yes.
All in favor? Okay.
Item six was simply an update on all the, the water and sewer regionalism projects we have going. Again, we provided that to the mayor and council at various workshops, but just updated those sheets and those are in your agenda as well.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Item fourteen is Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee report presentation of a councilman, Todd Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the sake of brevity, we're going to do things out of order. I'm going to start with item number two. Item number two, as you may know, we voted to approve an MOU regarding the Beaverbrook Apartment Complex. This is apartment complex that's in dire need of renovation, demolition, whatever you want to call it. It's tucked in between two of Gastonia Housing Authorities projects due to some things that are going on with that. We did have a request from one of the participants to, I guess, rescind that MOU, but because the project being up in the air and in such an early stage, we simply voted to kind of table the matter, more or less. We're going to wait and get more information on that.
The developer had requested that additional time. We're meeting with a couple of representatives on Thursday, so we'll try to get some more information.
And, and I don't think we need to vote, council, on that. That's just for information only. And that covers all of item number two. So we'll, we'll head back up to item number one. And item number one is a request for economic development grant for the rehabilitation of the Lawyer's Building. And I know we're all excited about the Lawyer's Building, but rather than read this word for word, I'm going to let Mr. Munn explain exactly what this grant entails and where the money comes from specifically.
As you see in, in the exhibit, the motion was made recommending that Lawyer's Building project move forward as presented by the council and with, and then, and staff mandate benchmarks to be met prior to these funds being paid and also on the condition that significant county participation be involved. And that was passed by the committee. What, what we are working on now, Mr. Kirby is here and he can elaborate on any changes that have occurred and perhaps also what his conversations with county have been because the day after we met as a committee, Mr. Kirby, not the county commissioner. So they have gotten, he's gotten some direction on going back through. And that was one of the conditions that the committee placed on our economic development grant. Now, our economic development grant as being requested by Mr. Kirby would be to have a, of course, ten-year period of time, have sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars is his request. Amount of revenue actually produced, estimated produced from the project is fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Both of these numbers are exclusive of the net increase in property tax. And the net increase in property tax for this building, once it's renovated, with thirty-two units of, of, thirty-two hotel units, potentially thirty-five, depends on how that's ultimately designed. And then a full-scale restaurant on the first floor, all of that development. However, that is assessed by the county. Difference in tax value compared to the way the value is now compared to after the improvements are made, also including the parking lot next to the, and that patio area, all of them. Whatever that incremental increase in tax based for that property will be, that annually... annually, we'll put that money back also into the project. So for instance, if it would be as much as the developer had said, the developer had estimated initially as two million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in tax value, then it would be an additional nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars of incremental tax. This revenue and all those other revenues are really only revenues that would be produced by the project, and not tax dollars from any other entity within the city. So other businesses and other property owners are not contributing to this. Project is essentially producing these estimated revenues, and those estimated revenues pop back in for any period of time, except for that ninety-eight, hundred and seventy dollar request in addition to that that Mr. Kirby has made. So we are putting together now a economic development agreement that, that Mr. Smith has drafted, helped on beer and sell, and the others and staff. They're gonna be working with Mr. Kirby, and we'll be sharing a copy of that with the county, so the county can see the language we're using, and they, they may use a lot of the same language, similar to what we did with Ole Hill. They have an agreement, good agreement, they mirror each other, they're a little different, but they mirror each other. They certainly are not in conflict, and I think that's one of the things that we wanna make sure we did. So in, in setting the benchmarks, what we're trying to say in this agreement, and what, what this agreement, I think, specifically says, is that the first dollars don't get paid off until the project's finished. The project has to be finished, actually, every year before any of all of the work. And it actually has to always be in place, that restaurant, that hotel has to be there. And every year that it's there, then those dollars take a lot back. The, 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 the structure of this is there's not, you're not alone. You're not participating in any way, that way. There's no ideal grant funds, simply taking basically the funds that have been from the project and reinvesting it back.
Question.
Yes?
The ninety-eight hundred dollars. The ninety-eight, nine thousand dollars, where's that come from?
That would have to come from another source. That would have to come from the general fund, or from downtown tax dollars, or some other place in addition to, we, we can, we feel pretty confident that we can show the generation new dollars for this project. If, for instance, some of these estimates were based upon an occupancy rate of fifty-five percent. So if the occupancy rate were seventy-five percent, and like that, well, then there's new revenues coming in, and those additional revenues might well be offset. If they're not, then, then, this is the gap. So far in our analysis, that, that it would have, it would have to come from some other source. You are also going to have one-time construction hit with this project. And also by actually occupying the Lawyers Building, which hasn't occupied in years, you're gonna have an impact on the surrounding property.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh...
Right, we, we projected, within the projected revenues, that's coming, water, sewer, electric, conference center revenues, conference center revenues, twenty-one thousand dollars. That comes from Bill Owen, who, who, the manager, feels pretty confident that's a minimum. And that would result by having advantage of having a hotel downtown, walkable to the conference center. And so that, we, we had one number of forty-five thousand. And we talked about different numbers, twenty-one seems to be a reasonable minimum. For instance, Kirby talked about a film festival. He does film festivals in the commercial building, so then that number might increase. And then we would use those dollars to help try to bridge any other.
So this, uh, so there'll be no tax money, or like a ninety-eight hundred that we're going to add in? That shouldn't be part of the agreement, should it? And if new revenue comes in, that fifty-one could go up later. If, if, if you had more revenue, fifty-one could go up more. I thought we were going to stick with the fifty-one or so.
Yep, the, the request from Mr. Kirby was the sixty-one.
That's not a few enough dollars.
But we can tell you that we feel we're comfortable with fifty, fifty. So there's that ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Question, with regard to the municipal service district package, are they included in these numbers? And then hotel occupancy taxes, are they somehow included or not?
Hotel occupancy taxes from the project.
Right.
But what will really happen is hotel occupancy taxes, by law, have to be collected, have to, must be given to the authority to that fund. And so that's where those dollars will come. Then the dollars then get allocated back out again to the children's in, or conference center. So there will be some of this, county dollars coming in. Some of them are earmarked. Dollars that we send back to Mr. Kirby will be dollars that we will be able to sell. Might come from different things. We will have to, it would be always a balance of that, and where our revenues come and where our revenues go.
He, he has to pay all of, all of the taxes. And all of the utilities. And then the grant would come out of the general fund commensurate to whatever amount council agrees to. But as with the Target Road project, what, the way that was written was whatever is generated, an amount equal to that will go into the grant. The grant comes out of the general fund.
And, and so in, in the same way, for instance, we collect money for hotels sometimes in dollars that will go to the, the occupancy tax fund. Expenditure actually might go to the general fund, the children's in, for example, allocated funds to children. So it'll move across. And we, we were, we were moved, each house, every year, we move dollars back and forth as needs.
Um... The fifty-one thousand dollars that the city's gonna collect annually increases, that has to do with twenty-one thousand dollars from the conference center?
Yes, it's included.
It's included, but I mean, how, how do we get that in?
If, if, if the hotel's not built, they, that revenue, in other words, this is additional, but revenues from the conference center are estimated as a result of having a hotel.
Jim, these are figures that Bill Owen provided to us based on his knowledge of the hotel industry and the conference center. But it's based on estimates that he thinks the conference center's business will increase, not just what they're doing now, or not just increases that he's planning on anyway, based on a hotel building.
McDonald's, McDonald's, um, is a very successful franchise. They, um, do a market study for a year. They, um, track, watch traffic patterns, pedestrians, they know marketing, they know who lives in the area, and how, how successful the project's gonna be before they open up. They do a study for a whole year. That's why you don't see any hotels closed after ever on the road. They're successful franchises. What kind of marketing studies been done here? Do we need a...
Am I allowed to say this? Am I allowed to say this? Uh, one of Mr. Curry's partners is a McDonald's franchisee owner, so I can assure you that all the background work's been done.
Has the gentleman had a vote on the project?
Mr. Kirby.
Has he ever run the project?
They're not gonna be running it. They're looking to hire someone to run it. Bill Owen with the conference center is on their committee looking for a, uh, ownership company, a franchise company, so to speak, that runs small hotels to come in, management, come in and run.
Have we given any funds to the hotels that are on Remount Road?
Why would we give money to hotels of Remount Road?
Because they're hotels as well.
It's not a historic building, it's been renovated.
It's a historic building, it's an earthquake building. When a building is truly a historic building, doesn't it every task come down by fifty percent? Does it have a fifty percent risk increase?
It's, it's, if the city, the county made it, it happened. Many historic buildings, they do not have that, but some do have that. Or a mill, because it's, it's, uh, one of the stipulations here, it seems to the county, that tax dollars, reinvesting that back into the project, is, there's no, there's no break there. We're not advocating that, that's not just for those, they will profit.
The problem I have with this project is that we're gonna be handing out money for someone to produce more in the building, where at last meeting, there was guys gonna revamp roads for a million dollars, because you're looking at the water and sewer, and you're gonna have three to four hundred jobs, and here's a lot for a person in the city. I just don't feel comfortable, you know, with six hundred and ten thousand dollars in ten years. I like that, I hope it does get built, I hope it closes, finds a new investor, as far as using the city money for it.
May I, uh, ask, Mr. Kirby? Come forward here just a minute, please, up from my phone. Tell us who you are, if you don't mind. Go ahead, Brandon.
Uh, I was just gonna, um, respond to, to that question. It's my understanding that, that no money gets given away until, not given away, excuse me, no money is granted to the applicant until they reach certain benchmarks. If they don't reach those benchmarks, they get no money from the city. They don't get the grant. It's not like the ideal grant that's given to, to people, uh, for seed money. Okay, so if, if the contract or the agreement is constructed the way that the committee, uh, asked the staff to do it, then they might not get any money, okay? They have to meet these benchmarks.
Why are we picking winners and losers? It's a free market, dude.
And that's a free market, but I mean, knowing coming to that is... How long has the Lawyers Building, it's out there deteriorating? And it's either lose a historic landmark, or give it a shot, one of the two, so... I'm...
For sixty-one thousand dollars, I think it's a fine investment. It's such a good deal.
I have two, two questions, uh, Nathan, that... Go ahead and give your name and address for the record, please.
Nathan Kirby, one ninety-five West Main.
Um... One ninety-five West Main, where?
Gastonia, sorry.
Alright. Um, the, um... I'm gonna ask this in a open way, that, that could be, anybody could find out. Just for, I guess, more or less for information purposes. I go home tonight and I pull up on the GIS, the, uh, pin, um, PID number one oh five nine oh six, and it'll show a D, that's the, the hotel, the, the Lawyers Building. And it'll show a D, the, who would that be D to, which is public records? Who, who owns this tonight?
Lawyers Building of Gastonia LLC.
And then I go to the Secretary of State, and I pull that up, the LLCs. Who does it show as principal?
It shows me as the registered agent.
The two members are you and...
Two members are myself and Laurel Homes, which is a, uh, is managed by a McDonald's franchisee that has a McDonald's restaurant.
Oh, okay. Well, that answers, that, and that's, that's all. Not as far as ownership?
Yes.
Okay. Um, s- the second question is, uh... This is not nitpicking, I want you to just help me out, so I don't worry about it anymore. Uh, I'm looking at red clay design development, I'm looking at these, these rehabilitation plans, and I'm just out of curiosity, and you don't have to answer this. Uh, it says a historic rehabilit, but if we are gonna be sort of partners, I like to, you know, know as much as I can. Uh, historic rehabilitation for First National Bank, uh, which First National Bank?
Uh, this was the First National Bank of Gastonia?
They're referring to the, the old First National Bank?
Yes, sir.
Well, that makes more sense. I, I thought if that was being done for lending purposes, well, it's all over today's paper that First National Bank, in modern daytime, is, is Ozarks or something, it's not, it's not a First National. But now I see what you, you answered my question.
Yeah, the, the historic name of the building was the First National Bank of Gastonia, that was its first purpose. Back over the years, it was relabeled the Lawyers Building when it turned into attorney's offices, and, you know, the bank had failed.
And we sneaked in there and looked at that, uh, thirty-five, forty years ago, looked at that, uh, room for the director?
The boardroom.
Boardroom? Absolutely not.
Yeah, the, the honduras mahogany is still intact.
That's, that's, that's...
It's, it's gorgeous.
But you've answered my question. It wasn't me a nosy, it's just that I wanted to know, when I looked it up to ownership.
Sure, sure. Um, all the other parcels are, are dated to the same, uh, to the same entity as well, in order.
Now, Mr. Munn, we talked in your office, you were talking about you recommend the fifty-one thousand.
Yes, the fifty-one thousand.
Not the sixty-one, the fifty-one, so I'm getting confused here when you keep pushing the sixty-one. I don't understand this, what we talked about.
In my memorandum to the committee, and it's in the council, and I wanted to be clear that Mr. Kirby had requested sixty-one thousand, and I also wanted to be clear that we feel pretty, we feel good about fifty-one thousand revenue that the city can produce. And so the ninety-eight hundred dollars is the difference. So we, what we were giving to the council were the revenues that this project made. But Kirby was requesting sixty-one thousand, that's the difference.
So you're recommending the fifty-one?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes?
Just wanted to ask Mr. Kirby, uh, how did you come up with the sixty-one thousand?
Um, it's actually convoluted, but as we began to look at the, um, the loan to value, the debt coverage ratios and things on the project, we came up with during the first ten years of shortfall, that we needed to meet to hit a loan to value that a lender would, would take. You know, Councilman Gallagher made a point earlier about, you know, let the market decide. Unfortunately, the way this building was constructed, no one within the market could renovate it. It, it's absolutely impossible to, to do and have it be commercially viable without some other source of alternative financing. And we're putting a significant amount of cash into the project, much more than you would see for a new construction project, to, to basically make it, uh, make it fly. And, you know, we're, we're gonna have a property that's worth less than what we're actually having to dump into it to make it happen. And we feel good about it, it is the most iconic building, I feel like, downtown. But the way this building was built was, just, just a little bit of history so you understand where this comes from. But it was built a hundred years ago, or they started construction a hundred years ago next year. Uh, so we have an anniversary coming up, and our birthday, if you will. And the building was type one, in a, in a day when type one construction was not very common. Uh, and it was, type one's basically what you do for high rises in New York City, buildings that have to be bomb-proof, literally things that we don't see around here. And type one has to have a three-hour fire rating. This building has a four-hour fire rating around it, around its structural members. So it's built, you know, literally to last. That being said, it also had marble walls on, in the lobby and things that, for us to go in and put stone granite marble back in to, to line these walls, it's, it's gonna cost more than the properties were, but it's the right thing to do. So, you know, as far as a project, so, you know, as far as the, uh, the budget, when we, when we looked at what was feasible for, you know, any investor to lose and put into a project... and then looked at what the, what the most loan to value we, we could, we could squeeze, which would be about eighty-five percent, um, there was a shortfall. And the shortfall was about ninety-one thousand dollars a year. And we looked, or ninety-two thousand a year, and we looked to, uh, to split that up amongst city and county, uh, utilizing the net new revenues. Um, and we, and, and as, as Ed said, they feel good about the numbers, the fifty-one, and that's because it's very conservative. Uh, you know, if you use the travel tourism numbers from, from Walter Israel, we're, we're really looking at about sixty-five percent occupancy and looking at a nightly rate of somewhere between ninety-five and a hundred and ten. Uh, when you factor that in, it's another six grand of revenue. Um, then you also have additional utility revenue because there's a higher occupancy rate, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, you know, realistically, when you factor all that in, we're probably really only three or four thousand dollars worth of the shortfall. But, you know, we don't mind being conservative with it, and, you know, I've talked with Ed, I've talked with, with Flip, and, um, you know, we understand the heartburn of, of having to subsidize a, a private sector deal. Um, the, the, the truth of it is, it just won't happen, and it'll be there for another thirty-one years vacant. Um, because it, it, it doesn't make, uh, we can't reach a rate of return, given the level of finish that has to be put into that building to reach our, you know, to, to rehab it properly. We will never reach a commercially viable rate of return during those first ten years. Um, but, but the goal is, once the ten years is up, and we have to start paying the full property tax, and we have to, you know, we have no incentive coming in, we go and refinance the property, it has a lower debt service at that point in time, and therefore it can carry itself. So it's really a long-term, uh, long-term deal. And i- as far as management, we absolutely have no experience managing a hotel. Don't wanna do it, don't intend to do it. Uh, we're working with Bill to put together the proper, uh, property management software, central reservation software, uh, the proper management team, uh, to run the facility. Um, and, you know, realistically, uh, we're looking, as far as our level of quality, our linens, that, that, that he's, he's, you know, that we're leaning towards our, what he would, he would have at the Starwood Resorts that he worked at. Um, there's no other hotel in, in Gaston County that, that has that type of, uh, level of quali- quality. So, um, you know, I think it'll be a, a great impact on downtown. Uh, if I'm not mistaken at the meeting, Bill pointed out that I believe there were five workshops that they could not book last month because they needed eight to ten rooms, or eight to twelve rooms for each of those. Um, and, you know, we're projecting, if I'm not mistaken, in that twenty-one thousand, we're only projecting ten and a half events per year. Um, he had five last month, he put in book. So I think we're really, really conservative with the revenue numbers, and I think the city stands to, to, to hopefully reduce the amount of subsidy that they have to pay to the conference center, once, once there's lodging downtown. Um, I mean, that's all, that's really our goal.
Mr. Mayor, it's, it, instead of being ten years, it was gonna be eleven point three five years instead of ten, right? Because of that extra amount of money.
If, if you fund it, have that...
It's sixty-one.
If you use those numbers, it went all the way to sixty-one, that's correct.
Eleven years, three point, eleven point three five years, not ten. So the fifty-one would do it in ten.
It's actually balancing every year.
Yeah.
You would get it at the end of ten, ten years. And as Mr. Kirby said, if, if it does that, then it actually...
Right.
Yeah, I, I'm going along with Sam.
Yes?
A quick question, um, to, to go to, I come from, go to one of your comments. I actually had brought that up about what was the feeling of the other hotel, for example, three now. And I know that we sort of put on a loose agenda for you, that you are going to have a meeting with the tourism, the Gastonia Tourism Development Authority, which some of the hotel owners are part in, and obviously their dollars, their heads on their shoulders generate some of the dollars for this, for this project. How, did you have that meeting yet, or where are we with that?
Scheduled nineteen, uh, it's regular, it's gonna be on the twenty-first. We moved it back to the nineteenth to date.
Yeah, I wanna clarify there really quickly. Their dollars for their hotel occupancy tax, I, I don't believe are gonna be used to fund this project. I don't believe that's, um, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, yeah, just, just to make sure. Um, and I did reach out to them individually. Um, I've, I've not received callbacks yet, but, you know, every, everybody's busy, so.
You had met with the county. What, what have they said?
Um, surprisingly, uh, it, it was very promising. Uh, we went in thinking that we were probably gonna be fifty-fifty and, and, and looked for a, you know, one, one person to push us over the edge. Um, we, we, we believe we probably, you know, have, have a significant amount of votes now, as far as support. Um, you know, don't count your votes till, till the meeting, but, uh, you know, they, they, the response that we got from the county was, was, was actually overwhelming. They believe that the city will, it was the same thing Brenda mentioned, if the county will, will support this, then, then she would feel good about supporting it. They said the same thing about the city. Um, and, you know, they, they appointed a commit, a committee of, I believe, three, uh, to meet with, with a few councilmen and, uh, city staff, and basically put together a deal. Um, you know, if you look at, at the way the meeting went, um, I'd say the, the EDC, uh, for the county EDC, were not very supportive. Um, this is not, uh, I hate to say it, but I don't believe it's the, the brand of economic development that, that, that our county has done in, in, in past years. But, um, our county commissioners seem to be very progressive about, you know, trying to help foster, uh, the, the industry that, that we're looking to, to grow in, in Gastonia. So, uh, and, and it goes beyond the hotel. Um, we need the lodging rooms, not just to help the conference center, but we need the lodging rooms to continue furthering the film activities that we're doing in downtown. And without lodging, we can't attract the independent films, the, the larger independent films and bring them here. Um, they won't, I mean, they, they need lodging, that's a, um, in, in very close proximity to the editing bays and the, and the production offices and things that, that they work out of. Uh, so, you know, that, it goes beyond, uh, just, uh, just building the hotel. It, it also, you know, pushes over into us being able to move forward with the commercial building and renovate it properly.
Um, the, uh, you know, I have a problem with that. This is not gonna even be a named hotel like, you know, Clarion or, um, Hampton Inn or Super Eight or Super Six, Keep the Light On. Um, because they got websites and they got marketing out there that is phenomenal. I mean, we're gonna be just like, we got a hotel here. I mean, these guys are hitting it every day.
I, I can speak to that.
I just don't feel comfortable coming out of nowhere.
Yeah, w- we, we aren't coming out of nowhere. Um, we're actually, through contacts that Bill Owen had with Starwood Resorts and, uh, Richfield, they put us in contact with the leading central reservation system, uh, software manufacturer in, in the world, uh, for independent hotels, as well as for some of the large, uh, flag hotels. And we're gonna be using their system, they're designing our website, they're designing our central reservation system. And so we'll have the same thing that the boys have, um, as well as a property management system. Uh, we're, we're, we're basically buying the Cadillac of property management systems. Uh, so, you know, LG is actually, uh, involved in, in providing us with the televisions and the HVAC systems and things for the, for the hotel. And we're going very high-end. Uh, the hotel, the, um, TVs will be forty-two inch LEDs. Um, I don't think there's a hotel in town that has larger than a thirty-two inch, and most of them are LCDs, not LED. Um, they'll be, uh, you know, hospitality-grade TVs, so they'll be able, able to go there and pull up info on surrounding businesses, the downtown, the hotel itself, uh, right on the television. Um, you know, we're not, we're not looking to do this, uh, in, in a small way in any way. Um, you know, either, either we go big or we go home. And, um, you know, by, by going for, going after the software and going after the, uh, you know, the qualified folks to operate this thing and utilizing a lot of Bill's contacts, because he's been invaluable. Um, you know, he, he is, I, I believe, you put us in contact, so, um, he's been absolutely invaluable in, in, in helping us, uh, navigate through the, through, through the process. I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds of softwares out there. There's hundreds of different companies that do, uh, do this, um, you know, do the, do the reservations, do the property management. And, and he's been, you know, by putting us in contact with the folks that work with the big resorts, you know, that have retired or, or are still working there, um, it's been very, very helpful. Uh, so we've, we've pretty much solidified, uh, to go with Scepter for the, um, central reservation system and, uh, go with, um, MSI for the, uh, for the property management software. Um, actually, I, I believe the Scepter rep was planning on coming to the meeting, uh, with us on the twentieth, if, if we go to that meeting, uh, just to talk about how important it is to have a central reservation system. And why a lot of the small hotels that don't go and buy those or don't invest in those, uh, the software and the hardware, um, required to do, like you said, and market and get it out there, uh, why they fail so quickly. Um, because they don't have a marketing budget. They don't have, you know, Ash and I discussed today about, um, you know, how, how do we keep the level of quality up? How do we ensure that, you know, the, the linens aren't gonna get frayed, and this isn't gonna happen, and it's not gonna turn into something that you don't wanna see downtown? And we do that by putting reserves in place. You know, we fund capital reserves. We put, uh, um, you know, I think in our budget, we have a forty thousand dollar a year marketing budget for the hotel. That's pretty big for a sm- hotel this size. Um, we, we don't intend to not market heavily. Uh, you know, and, and just, you know, if we market this, um, not only that, last year, um, when we filmed the sh- filmed the renovation of Lawyers Building, um, those episodes will go out. Um, we'll be launching preservation.com, uh, after September first. And so the ten episodes that we filmed last year will be available to the public to watch us renovate the mill that we did. Um, when we rent it, when we filmed the Lawyers Building, we'll be putting, doing the same thing. Uh, so preservation.com is, um, you know, if, if you're looking for historic preservation, it should be, once the site's up and running, it should be probably the first thing that pops up there. Um, the word preservation gets searched a hundred and ten million times a month in Google. Um, so we think we'll get some pretty good traffic by backlinks and things, supporting the hotel with the fact that it was done on the show and it was, and, and we aired those episodes.
Let me interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Brenda, you've been waiting.
What, and I appreciate that. Uh, I was gonna ask about, when will you, when do you think we're gonna learn something from the camera?
Uh, their meeting, we're scheduled to go on their meeting the twenty-second.
Of August.
Of August. So they, they will vote, uh, based on whether the city supported it or not.
Okay. Uh, is this considered a boutique hotel?
It, it would be.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes, sir, I was twenty-three minutes ago. Um, I'd like to make a motion that the, the council, uh, approve this recommendation from the committee.
How much money?
Ask me that.
Sixty-one or fifty-one?
It's the sixty-one.
Okay.
Second.
Is there a second? We have a second. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make one point and just kind of give a different perspective here. Um, you know, several years ago, I think we're going on about maybe seven years ago, that, uh, the city made a loan guarantee to the National White Water Center. And at the time, you know, it was a little bit of a different kind of a, you know, guarantee. It was, we were trying to give them...
It was technically a service contract.
And I always appreciate my, my city attorney to make sure we stay on, on the right semantic level here. But in, in any regard, my, my point that I'm trying to make is that the, the city extended, you know, support to what became a regional project, which got off to a rough start. And basically, we didn't think we were gonna have to pay that seventy thousand dollars each year because we had great, you know, thoughts about what this was gonna be. We continued to pay that seventy thousand dollars every year, and that has become a great facility. And I believe that it's done wonders for our region, and I think it's done positive things for Gaston County too, and Gastonia in indirect relation. Um, and, and I'd like to think that if we were ever gonna make an investment, you know, and this is totally different in terms of its finances, we're only gonna be given money back in a reimbursement grant set instead of monies that are just going in one direction. So these are, we're just basically giving the man the money back that we're gonna collect, uh, for the taxes and all, all these other revenues. So even, even, Mr. McIntyre, even at that, you know, that difference, that ninety-eight hundred dollar difference, you know, if that helps this project move forward and it is really still predicated on successful completion benchmarks year after year after year, even if that did in any way cost the city, uh, that ninety-eight hundred dollars relative to, like I say, that seventy thousand we spent, which is across the river and has, you know, a slightly distance impact, I would say, you know, if charity is gonna start at home, this would be an excellent place to, you know, to start that. So that's, that's...
There is a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Nathan, are you planning on living in the penthouse?
We, we are, actually. We're planning on renting it, uh, leasing it, um, at the average nightly rate, um, based on the average occupancy. And we'll also have it for lease, though. Um, it'll be a minimum three-night lease with a two-week, uh, notification. So...
That's where you'll live?
Yes, sir. Between there and...
Okay, yeah, ready to vote? All in favor? Raise your hand. Okay. Oppose? Okay, six one. Took me a minute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That is all from my report.
Thank you. Item fifteen, Facilities Management Committee Report. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Craig, chair.
Uh, in, uh, essence of time...
Thank you.
I, I will, uh, very quickly, uh, review this. If there is any questions as I review it, please, uh, ask them at that point in time. Uh, item one was a proposed cell tower lease at fire station number eight, site between Gastonia and American To- uh, Tower. We did not vote on specifically doing anything other than, uh, continuing to negotiate with them to get a better price than a thousand dollars that they're willing to pay. So staff is working on that, uh, with the lease. Item number two, offered to purchase city property on Piler Lake Road. Uh, the city had received an, uh, offer to purchase two point eight four acres of land at twenty-one hundred dollars per acre. Uh, the committee voted unanimously, unanimously, three zero, to recommend the property be sold for a total amount of fifty-nine sixty-four with the conditions as presented by staff, uh, with an, uh, uh, upset bid. We have to go through that upset bid process. Any questions?
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? We want one on the first and two. Let's go back to that one. All, all...
Correct.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, item three.
Item three, uh, offered to purchase city property, that seven oh seven Logan Street. Uh, the city received an offer of seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty dollars for point zero eight acres. Uh, the committee unanimously approved, uh, recommending the purchase of this property. I put that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Discussion, all in favor?
Uh, item four, uh, proposed policy revision, uh, refund of fees for building permits and site plan subdivision review. Uh, the, um, staff, uh, presented a plan that currently the city refunds ninety percent of the building permit minus ten percent or a hundred dollar minimum charge, okay? On site plans and subdivision reviews, the city presently refunds a hundred percent of said fees, which by doing so does not cover the city's costs. So review work. The following changes were proposed by staff. Building permit fees refund only given within a thirty-day period, and the refund would be ninety percent of the, uh, permit fee minus a ten percent administration fee, which also, with also a twenty-five dollar minimum and a hundred dollar maximum. Uh, I put that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Yeah?
Uh, second, the building plan, uh, re- reviewed fees, initial submission charge would be ninety percent of the applicable fee in lieu of the current thirty percent upfront cost with no refund. Uh, and then, uh, number three, subdivision and site plan review fees. After the project has gone through the TRC, fees would become non-refundable. Up until the point of the TRC review, a hundred percent refund would be issued, less a twenty-five dollar administration fee. Put those in a form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Uh, there were no other items discussed.
Thank you very much. It's item fifteen. Moving right along, item sixteen, uh, appointments to the Gastonia Planning Commission. Uh, sixteen is board the fourth seat and, and an at-large seat, uh, whatever.
Mayor, we do not have an appointment yet for Ward Four.
Okay. I think it's tradition that, as the at-large seat is, uh, usually a recommendation on appointment of, uh, the, the mayor, subject to approval of the council. And, uh, I'd like to hear a motion, if I could, to, uh, to appoint Alec Long to the, uh, to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, a, a point, I might, it's tradition, but back when I was mayor, they always brought up other names.
We gotta get a second. Where's coming?
But, 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 um, I, I was gonna make, if we're gonna have more than one, it should be a nomination, shouldn't it? Then you vote them in alphabetical order.
The appointment section of the city code says that each person who is, is nominated and receives a second, then the mayor would call the names in alphabetical order, and whoever gets the most votes would be appointed.
So, you have to have a second?
Yeah.
If they're nominations?
Yes.
And then I'll ask for a second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
Did you get, did you get a motion for Mr. Long?
Motion for Mr. Long. Is there a motion, Mr. Alec Long? Or is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, are there any other nominations?
Yeah, Mr. William Gross, I think that when we bumped him, that, that was kinda called him off-guard and I just wanted to right a wrong, uh, and consider putting Mr. William Gross back in the at-large seat, which is where he was in the first place. And he was chairman of the Planning Commission, and for you, reappoint him, we have continuity and experience, and he hits the ground running, and he doesn't actually miss a meeting, since they have Thursday meeting, maybe we could find something, I know you want Mr. Long, but, uh, maybe we could find something else for him, that he could get into some training and, and, and kinda learn the processes and, you know, something, maybe put him in an alternate position of, uh, zoning board adjustment. But anyway, Mr. William Gross, uh, like, present his name also.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we will put him in alphabetical order and vote this time.
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? I won't follow you. Okay. Uh, we'll, of course, that would be William Gross first, uh, and then Mr. Alec Long. All in favor of, uh, Mr. Gross, uh, being appointed to the Gastonia Planning Commission? Raise your hand. One, two, three, okay. All, all of those that are in favor of Mr. Alec Long being appointed, raise your hand. Okay, four to three, Mr. Long. Okay, um, and you go...
Right, we're, we're gonna give you that, sir.
Thank, thank you. Item seventeen, City Attorney Report.
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Item eighteen, City Manager Report, uh, come on.
Mayor, uh, a few things here. We will have, uh, three requests for income services coming. Two of them just missed the, the date a little bit, but we think they're important. One is the Twenty-seventh Forever Foundation Incorporated Group, uh, they want to have a program October the twelfth, uh, and this will all come back to you at, at subsequent meetings with details, but I'm just giving heads up. Really, this, this group deals with juvenile diabetes and also, uh, organ donations, and they're gonna go out to Sims Legion Park. It's a real positive group. They missed it by a few days, but we, we think we can work, uh, it's gonna be October the twelfth. So, that, that, that group's becoming... Also, the Gaston Arts Council, which didn't do the downtown, uh, Homegrown Festival last year, they skipped a year, they wanna come back again, do it downtown. This is October the nineteenth, they just missed it by a few days, but again, we're going to consider that and bring that to you at a, at a future meeting. And now the Cancer Services of Gaston County, they're going over to Londo Park, uh, but they did leave the deadline. Those are all really good, positive organizations. And unless the council, we have that ninety-day requirement, and the, those two organizations just missed, unless the council has a direction, otherwise we will work with those groups. Uh, we, we have a sinkhole that's down on Third, uh, next to the old Park Hanson Building near the, the, the temple, uh, that there's a large drainage system under there. Uh, we've had, because of these rains, uh, you're, you're beginning to see where there are any gaps in any of our storm drains in our streets, and that water pushes, and then sooner or later you get these, and we, uh, talked to the fire chief, and we're, and our public works department is checking. As soon as we see them, we're quickly getting on top of it. It's a priority to have to fix it. It comes in front of everything else. And that sinkhole, we're fixing that. But, any of the construction projects that are going on, uh, the county's construction project, where they're putting storm drain on the county police building by, by the cemetery, crossing Franklin, uh, in the middle of their construction, heavy rains and part of Dean Smith's parking lot, it's, it's hanging in there for now, and I think we're okay. But, this is what we're gonna see when you get heavy rains. And it is our responsibility, it's the city. That's, that's something that we're all keeping our, our eyes on. And the work at Triple A going forward, and that should be, that should be the result. Uh, next, we've got a letter in the box by Framerton, and the Mayor Framerton thanking us, thanking the utilities department, uh, at Bernhard, because we, we brought him sand and tried to help him out as much as possible. And, uh, we got a notice about Time Warner Corporation is going all digital, so anyone that has analogs will not be able to interact with our, our governmental station and the education stations. These are changes, and I wanted to just mention that back in, in the, just the good old days when we had a license, we really got involved dictating...
The base.
Yeah. So, now, really, uh, you see the arguments between Warner, Dish Network, and all of a sudden, communities like Los Angeles doesn't have CBS anymore. It can happen with any community now, because it's between the big companies. We really don't have the ability, any of the, your constituents that call, we'll, we'll get that information. All these big companies have government affairs people, and they, they're trying to be sensitive to the public. So, we, all we have is the bully pulpit. If util, if, if the cable companies do things, but if, if something happens or if you have a question, let us know and we'll contact the government affairs people. We really don't have the authority to do anything other than just to make them uncomfortable if all of a sudden they pull some stations. And, uh, I think that's it.
The council reports, Mr. Craig.
Yeah, no reports, sir.
No report.
No report.
Just one item. Um, uh, I received some information today about, uh, uh, one of our staff members who is going to receive, uh, the Robert E. Stipe Award, and, uh, this is North Carolina's highest award presented to working professionals who demonstrate an outstanding commitment to historic preservation as part of their job responsibilities. And since nineteen eighty-three, this award has been given in honor of Robert E. Stipe of Chapel Hill. And Bob Stipe, who died in two thousand and seven, was a much lauded educator in the field of historic preservation, a mentor to a generation of preservation professionals. So, I just wanna make it, uh, public that our own Jack Kaiser is to receive this award, uh, as part of PNC's annual conference as of, uh, Friday, October fourth, and I, I think it's, uh, certainly well-deserved and just kinda tells us something we already knew, and that was how good Mr. Kaiser has been at his craft for many, many years, and, you know, this has been the, kind of the pinnacle of his, uh, career with the recent projects that have come to fruition. And we just wanna congratulate you, Jack. I think it's wonderful. Um, uh, those that can make it in Edenton on Friday, October fourth are invited to attend, and I have that information for anybody that might be there. But, hats off to you, sir. And that ends my report.
Thank you, sir. Several items. Uh, first off, I was, uh, attended the first, uh, meeting, trying to get a neighborhood watch together in Catawba Hills. We have, uh, real good community support there, chief. A couple of your officers were out, and I think that's gonna happen. I, I think it's a, it's a great community, um, and they, they, we had, I guess, about thirty people at the community watch meeting, which is pretty good to start off. Um, secondly, although we pretty much missed it, folks, tonight is National Night Out that, um, is happening down at the Target store. I think it's gonna be over after the time we pretty much get out, but, um, their, our PD is down there, they, uh, Target has made a donation, they have a lot of good displays down there. And lastly, uh, next week is the Shrine One Hundred Race over at Carolina Speedway. Was there last year. If you like racing at all, it's for a great cause, they have a rain date, and, uh, I'm gonna try and get there again this year, thought it was really fun. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll only say that Saturday, uh, represented the city, the Bethany Church, or, uh, National Guard members came home when they went, and, uh, it's five-hundred-and-fifth vision and, uh, two-hundred of them, and that was a wonderful, wonderful, uh, reason to be there, and certainly they've done it. And I've got to speak to every one of them. Glad to do that. Anything else? Is there a motion with adjournment?
Second.
Thank you.